Just fine for you.
Okay, good morning. It is Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. It is 10:00 a.m. And this is the regular city council meeting. And we will start with the pledge of allegiance this morning. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with infinite resources for all. And I will turn it over to Lisa Del Piccolo, our city clerk, for roll call.
Reverend Byden?
Present.
The last fellow?
Present.
Roy Anderson?
Present.
Dave Bowman?
Present.
Dave Kinnick?
Present.
All city council members are present.
Great, thank you very much. Mayor Prosser, are there any changes to the agenda this morning?
No way of learning that.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the call for public comment for non-agenda items. And so this is an opportunity if someone from the public wishes to join our meeting by Zoom or phone, to comment on anything that's not on our agenda. And so I will look to see if we have anyone from the audience raising their hand or calling in.
I see none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, we don't see anyone. So I will skip reading all of the words that are required.
I'm on you.
Oh.
Hello?
What?
Yes.
Do we have someone?
I'm sorry, my name's Adrian Alvarez.
Hang on, hang on, one second. If you would like to make public comment, then I need to read some, um, some language.
I think he's here for the liquor license hearing.
Oh. Are you here? If you're here for the liquor license hearing, we'll get to that in just a minute. Is that, are you here to talk about the liquor license?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hold tight and we'll, we'll get to that in just one second. Thank you, though. Okay, so we're gonna move from our public comment to item number six, which is approval of the city council minutes from the October 20th regular council meeting.
May I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 20th regular meeting as presented?
Great, we have a first and a second, and so please report your vote. Thank you very much, that motion passed unanimously. Next on our agenda is item seven, which is a new hotel and restaurant liquor license application. This is council consideration of an application for a new hotel and restaurant liquor license at 35 North and Compaughery Avenue for Sideline Sports Bar, Inc., doing business as Sideline Sports Bar, for consumption on the licensed premises. I will turn it over to our city attorney, Stephen Alcorn, for an introduction and discussion.
Okay, who, uh, I think we have Christine Valerie and Adrian are all present. Is that correct?
Do you want them to join us now?
Yeah, if, if we could, Mr. Story.
So we'll promote them from the audience to the meeting. And that will allow us and our city attorney to ask them questions and for them to be able to respond on the public record.
I think they're all on the one, um, they're all under Valerie here. Looks like they're all on the.
Okay.
I should be, I should be on my own. I should be. Can you hear me?
Okay, we have Mr. Alvarez.
Yes. And.
Good morning.
Hi.
Great. Thank you for joining us.
So, well, would the applicants introduce themselves? I'm not sure if one of you is gonna take over and kind of be the spokesperson, but if you could introduce yourselves and tell us where Sideline Sports Bar is going to be.
Good morning, I'm Christine Cox. Sideline Sports Bar is going to be at 35 North on Compaughery Avenue here in Montrose.
And take a few minutes to give us a little bit of plug about what, what your plans are, how it's going to be different from previous establishments or other establishments, what you hope to do with your, with the bar.
So I'm gonna turn that over to Adrian because, and Jeff, because they're the sports buffs here. And I'm gonna let you, I'm gonna let them talk to you guys about that.
So basically, we're, we're going more family oriented. We want sports, we want great food, we want great service. We're focused mainly on families. We're not so much worried about the nightlife as we are bringing in kids and their families and being able to share the experience with all of them.
Adrian, you there?
Yes, I keep going in and out of the service, I'm sorry. I'm at work and I have Wi-Fi, but I don't know why it's acting up. Um, yeah, we wanna bring the whole sport. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, we wanna bring the whole sports atmosphere to everybody, you know? We wanna, like, right now, we have NFL Network, we want every sport game. We want to just share with everybody. But we also wanna have it a family oriented business where during the day you can bring your kids. And, you know, we're gonna have arcade games. We wanna have, you know, we have a lunch menu for, for people to come in at lunchtime and be able to, you know, get there and get their food within 15 minutes. And, you know, be able to eat and leave, catch a little bit of the game before, you know, they have to go back to work. We want somewhere that you can go and not have loud music all day when you're trying to just have, you know, a meal, maybe, like I said, just to catch part of a game. But we also wanted to feel like a family establishment where you can bring your kids and everyone's dressed respectful. Uh, you get your, you know, we wanna change, I think, in Montrose, we have a trouble of. I'm sorry. I don't, I don't know what's going on, but.
Okay, so listen.
That's it.
So, uh, since this is a new hotel and restaurant license, we have to establish the needs of the community. Uh, so we're gonna set the city limits as the neighborhood. And then we'll also get into the character of the applicants, uh, which are the two things city council is going to be looking at making the determination today. Um, I'm gonna cut to the chase. I think you all remember when your establishment there was what you are currently describing. And then we've had a number of, uh, it was sold a couple of times and there was a deterioration in the clientele. There were problems in the neighborhood. Um, a lot of local businesses had some heartburn at some of the activity. So what are you going to do to ensure that you have a change in clientele or you're able to contain the clientele to not be urinating on the streets, not throwing trash around, not having fights out in the streets? The things that we're hearing from, uh, from other businesses in your, uh, in your block and your neighborhood.
Well, we wanna make sure that everyone, you know, we're making our waitresses, bartenders, take that alcohol class that is, uh, provided by the city and make sure that they, they know how to read a person by the intake of their alcohol. If they have had any alcohol in them, you know, be able to know when to say no more, you know, that you're cut it off and be able to, you know, be able to read a person and know that, you know, 'cause we have, we've cleaned our bathrooms, we worked on our plumbing, we, you know, and put more trash cans out, you know? If, um, I don't know why there'd be any, any bottles or any kind of liquor outside, especially in the winter or anything like that. But we're, we're gonna have bussers out there to clean. We're gonna be able to, we'll clean the sidewalks every day. We'll, we'll make sure that there's well, you know, places for trash cans for people to put their, um, alcohol bottles or cans or whatever they have in, in these things. Then we're gonna have a busser to clean these tables, you know? Once they're done with it, have it removed off the tables. So there is no.
I would like to add too that, um, morally, we are different. We all have families. We all are family-based people. We've made mistakes and stuff like that, but we don't want, um, the drama and, and stuff like that. We want to, everybody's gonna be wearing classy uniforms. That's how we represent ourselves. I have been in the customer service business for 22 years. Um, it's about, about establishing something. Um, and we don't want it to be a bar and loud music and stuff like that. We actually want a different clientele that has been in here. When Sydney owned it before, that's what it was. There was family-based people, good clientele coming in here. That's what we want to bring back. We don't want brawls and fights and upsetting the neighbors or anything like that. We want to make this block better.
Um, and I have to admit, there was a time that after city council meetings, you get a lot of city councilors that would head over and kind of have, this is before all of you guys. Um, and, and have a beer after city council. And it was nice to be able to do that. Um, and I really like what I've heard you talk to Ms. Del Piccolo about some of the, uh, the lunchtime specials and catering to downtown businesses at lunchtime. Uh, could you talk a little bit about that?
So we're gonna do lunch specials like soup and sandwiches. Um, we're gonna have burgers, we're gonna have wings, we do have hot dogs. Um, and it's all fresh and authentic and new and something different. Um, and that's what we want. We want you guys to be able to walk down here and to be able to grab a quick bite within 15 minutes or less to be served and to get a good lunch and enjoy it and, and watch some games and, and get back to work. Um, or if you need to come down here and have a meeting or something like that and you wanna bring somebody down and talk to about something like that, that's the kind of environment that we want to invite everybody to. Um, it's not where I, you have to come in here and worry about Joe being slummed over on the bar. You know, I mean, that's the environment that we wanna create, is a positive, clean, um, environment where everybody wants to come to.
Uh, so how are you gonna handle, um, service to minors or more importantly, not serving minors?
Every ID gets checked. Um, I have been in the retail business for 22 years. I already have my TIPS training class. Um, I am the lead manager at the city market downtown and everybody is required to ask for an ID. It's not that hard to do. Doesn't matter how old they are. If it says that they're 50 years or younger, you ask for an ID.
And at least one of us will be present at the restaurant at all times.
Um, what background do the four of you have in, um, in the business, especially within the state of Colorado, in applying the liquor code?
Well, like I said, go ahead, Adrian.
I've, uh, I've, I, I worked in the beer industry right now. I'm a sales rep for central distributing in Delta County. And, uh, and I have also, uh, served, served tables, bartended, and I've managed a restaurant while I was in college. Go ahead, Christine.
Okay, so one of the things that we have to determine whether there is a need or desire to have the, uh, another liquor license issued. Uh, one of the things we look at is petitions you submitted, petitions of, with 210 signatures. 31 signatures were deemed to be insufficient, 18 outside city limits, 11 insufficient address, two failed to indicate support or opposition. So 179 signatures were determined to be valid in support of the license. Uh, some of the highlights of comments, really excited, 100% support business, really excited, can't wait for an open, hurry and open, outstanding citizens that will have, will run a great, safe establishment, please open soon, good, responsible guys, looking forward to trying it, good luck in your new adventure. So, uh, besides these, uh, the petitions, why do you think that the, uh, that the citizens want to have one more, uh, bar licensed in town?
Uh, just what we've witnessed in the, in the past two months, we've been working on this place. The amount of people that have stopped by to check to see if we're open or when we're gonna be open is eye popping to us. It's been just people after people wanting us to be open. Not to mention all our coworkers, friends, everybody wants a good, decent place to go have lunch, sit down, BS with your friends.
Watch sports.
And watch sports.
The only place that you can really go and watch a sports game is Applebee's or Chili, where it's a, a family-friendly environment. Um, we wanna bring that to downtown Montrose. Um, that's our whole goal. So, I mean, Avs game, Nuggets, um, golf, NASCAR, Kentucky Derby. I mean, whatever, any, whatever is on, that people are interested in, that's what we wanna bring down. And they don't have that.
I will save, uh, council needing to ask this question by, because I'll just ask it right now. Will you be showing Browns games?
If we have to.
Yeah.
Yes, that will be on.
Maybe we'll have to deny it on that.
Well, I know, uh, when Sydney owned, uh, owned it, or Sydney owned it, it was pretty popular event. Uh, the, uh, it almost became a Browns bachelor bar. Now, council also received a letter requesting denial from a local businessman. I will not read it because it's been distributed to council. Um, and I sort of addressed the concerns, which is parking area, dumping of large amounts of glass bottles in the bar, placing of waste disposal dumpsters and grease out, uh, grease tank in the alley. You, I brought that up earlier, you've kind of addressed that. I'll also leave it to council if they have specific questions on that unless, uh, they ask me to specifically ask. Um, but I would request if, uh, if council does grant the license, that you get a copy of this letter from the city clerk so you can take a look at it. Um, and it's all been kind of mismanagement of previous owners and what they haven't done to be good neighbors. Uh, so I think that just to be a good neighbor, you're gonna wanna see that.
Okay.
I agree with that. We wanna make everybody happy. We wanna do it the right way.
Uh, council, that concludes my questions, both on the moral fitness and character of the applicants as well as the needs and desires of the neighborhood. So I'll turn it over to Madam Mayor for any further questions and for the hearing itself.
Great, thank you very much. I, I think you asked a lot of questions that we would have normally asked, but on Zoom, it's hard to keep changing speakers. So I appreciate you asking such thorough questions. Before I open the public hearing, does council have any questions for the city attorney or for the applicant?
I have one. Uh, I don't recall, did we hear what the hours of operation are? Are they the same each day or are there any differences on weekends?
No, we didn't. If someone can, uh, address, uh, operating hours.
10:30 to midnight. Seven days a week.
Thank you.
My other question is, uh, the prior establishments had an outside seating area and I was just kinda curious how you're gonna regulate that and prevent patrons from just walking off with a beer in their hand?
Well, uh, as I said, we're, there will always be one of us on, on the clock, especially when we get started here. And me and Adrian will be the guys on the clock, 5:30 every day. So we're basically the bouncer, manager, whatever we need to do. So it will be our responsibility to make sure they're taking care of that patio the way they need to.
Now, are you gonna continue to open that patio area to, uh, clients for lunch, dinner?
Uh, we are. Obviously, we're on the cusp of winter, but springtime, it will be, we will be serving food out there. We are gonna change it to, it won't be a smoke area anymore. We will have tables and we will be serving food out there.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson?
Yeah, um, so my wife and I like to take our college-age granddaughter to lunch. I suppose that we come in and sit down and your server comes up and I order three beers. What, uh, how, how would the server handle that?
Check IDs?
Well, she would first, she would first greet you and, uh, thank you guys for coming in. Then she would actually ask you if you guys want anything to drink. And when you guys ask for any kind of alcohol beverages, that's when she would take, you know, and ask you for your ID and check every one of your guys' ID, you know? There's no age discrimination, so she's gonna check everyone that's at the table. Whoever orders one needs to have an ID.
Okay, that, that's great. We're, we're real concerned about underage drinking, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions from council? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing portion of this liquor license hearing. And I'll ask, um, if we have anyone in our online audience who is wishing to speak to this license.
I see no one requesting permission to speak, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. It doesn't look like we have anyone, so I will go ahead and close the hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor.
Now, Mayor, I, uh, moved to approve a new hotel and restaurant liquor license at 35 North on Compaughery Avenue for Sideline Sports Bars Incorporated, doing business as Sideline Sports Bar for consumption on a licensed premises.
One second, Deb.
Great, we have a first and a second, so please go ahead and report your vote. And that passed unanimously. So, um, congratulations to a new downtown business on your new liquor license.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming to the.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Hope to see you here.
Sounds good. Okay, um, item number eight is ordinance 2514. This is our first reading, um, of an ordinance providing and appropriating funds for the spraying, the expenses and liabilities of the city of Montrose, Colorado during the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2021. And I will turn it over to our city finance director, Shani Wittenberg.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and City Council. Um, so ordinance 2514 is before you tonight on first reading, or today, sorry. Um, appropriating funds for 2021. Let's see, what's the best way to do this? Let me share my screen. As soon as I. Sorry, I had it all ready to go and then I switched it around. There we go. Sorry, having technical difficulties? All right, hopefully you can see my screen.
Yes.
It always looks a little weird on my end when I share my screen. Um, so 2021 budget. Um, for. So our budget process each year is pretty much the same. It involves department heads, supervisors and city council. We start out with a big picture meeting on June 2nd this year. Um, basically taking the ideas, discussions, that type of thing, um, from that meeting into the full budget preparation part of our year, which is really May through September. And it includes a 40-hour retreat with our, um, department heads, supervisors, uh, city manager's office, finance office. And then there's several department heads that sit in for the full 40-hour session. We go through every line item of the budget. Uh, then in September, after we have a proposed budget, we have a, um, budget meeting with the city council to discuss some of the final things that we feel are important and we can appropriate for, for the next year. After that, we take that information to an open house, which was on October 20th this year. And then the charter, of course, mandates that we have to have a proposed budget uh, by October 15th, a public hearing prior to November 15th. And this meeting serves as one of those. And then a city council, um, that needs to approve the budget by the end of November. Uh, sorry, does somebody have a question?
Nope, keep going.
Okay, all right. So the, um, ordinance 2515 totals $78,190, now I lost my number. Um, and this slide just shows kinda how that's broken down. We've got several different funds in, at the city of Montrose and they're really dependent upon what kind of revenues they receive. So the general fund at $26.9 million in 2021. Um, the majority of the revenue for the general fund comes from sales and use taxes. And then we've got the public safety fund, where part of the revenue is coming from the general fund and the other part is coming from the 0.58% sales and use tax. Um, office of business and tourism is made up of retail sales enhancement dollars and tourism promotional dollars. So those are special revenues that come into the city of Montrose. Um, capital improvement funds, those are in, for governments. We separate our capital projects that are gonna last more than five years into a different fund than our general funds. Um, our enterprise funds consist of the water fund, the super fund, trash and recycling. Our internal service funds are quasi-enterprise funds. They serve the customers, um, which are internal, so the departments of the city, the different funds. So that kinda gives you a rundown. Yes, it's $78.2 million, but it goes towards several different, um, funds. And $20 million of that 78 million is capital projects for 2021. So another representation of the budget kinda shows the history, the, what we've actually spent in 16, 17, 18, 19 is still un-audited, so I just wanna point that out. And then budget for 2020 and budget for 2021. And you see that difference in the capital outlay of almost $10 million, a little over $10 million. And then the graph just as a, um, picture of what we plan to spend in 2021. So governmental funds of the city include the general fund, the public safety fund, eight special revenue funds, debt service funds, two permanent funds, three capital projects funds. Capital, major capital that we plan to, um, construct in 2021 includes the amphitheater project, total projects 3.2 million, but out of the capital improvement fund will come 2.78 million. Um, then there's the Demrep fund for 25,000 and the conservation trust fund is 420,000. Um, we've been saving this money over the last several years and there's also a partnership with the Rotary. So they'll be contributing, um, I wanna say it's about $200,000 to this project. The public infrastructure to support multifamily housing development in 2021 at 2.67 million. The Woodgate Road realignment, that's a project that's been in the works for a long time and I think it'll be a great addition to our city at 1.6 million dollars. Then our, our required, um, quasi-required, we always put money in the budget for sidewalk and ADA improvements throughout the city. And then replacing Birch Street, Birch Street Bridge, that's year one, 150,000. The rest will be done in 2022. And then some street infrastructure improvement projects, basically our movemo.co projects at 750,000. Enterprise funds for this city, the water fund, we have proposed to, uh, budget about $10 million. Sewer, 5.4 million. Trash and recycling, just under 2 million. And then the golf course. The golf course is a quasi-government enterprise fund where half of its revenues come from the general fund, half come from user fees. In the water fund, there's lots of capital projects next year. The big one is Sunset Mesa Tank, year two at 3.25 million dollars. The serodivergent structure at 75,000. Seres Park Waterline, year two, at 200,000. Townsend Waterline Replacement, year one of a million dollars. The Southeast Transmission Main Design at 250,000. Valve replacements at 25,000. Fire hydrant replacement at 35,000. Woodgate realignment, 120,000. That's the portion of the Woodgate project. So we don't go back in in a few years and dig it up to replace, um, water pipes. Um, 120,000 will be spent to make sure that's all in good condition. And then public infrastructure to support multifamily housing development at 650,000. Here's just a gra- Here's just a graphical representation of the water fund over time. And you can see there where we are using some reserves between '20 and '21. It's dropping down, but still way above what the 90-day reserve is. So the water fund is definitely a healthy fund. The sewer fund, we've got several projects there as well. The Woodgate subdivision sewer rebuild, this is year two, so it's, it's in, on the Woodgate Road, but it's not the same as the Woodgate Road realignment. Manhole lining, that's something we generally have in the budget, $100,000. Replacing six manholes at 96,000, and then curd and place pipe lining, 250,000. And there again, public infrastructure to support multifamily housing development at 900,000. At our wastewater treatment plant, there's just a couple of capital projects in 2021 that need to be completed. Graphical representation of the sewer fund, see there where we are using quite a bit of capital, but our forecast is to, as we gain more sewer customers, that will help the sewer fund and kind of maintain that 90-day reserve. Trash and recycle rate increase for 2021. This is the only rate increase we have in the budget for 2021. And it's a 5%. Proposed for a 90-gallon container with one pickup per week, that would be residential. The new rate would be $15.12, or a 72-cent increase. Commercial or multifamily 300-gallon containers is basically a cent increase per gallon. So we do it that way because on our commercial, non-residential side, you can have one pickup per week, you could have three pickups per week, and you could have multiple 300-gallon containers as well. And with that, we've got a couple of graphs. This one just showing the fund with the rate increase, so you see how we stay above that reserve. And then this one representing a projection, so budget of 2020 through projected 2026. And you can kind of see this gray and blue line kind of just maintain, if you will. So as, as we get further into this, we will definitely be reevaluating to see how things are going and make recommendations to city council as necessary. So with that, you have the first reading of the appropriating ordinance 2514. And I'll entertain any other questions, or if somebody has a different comment, or you want to see something different, please let me know. And I'm going to stop sharing my screen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. We've spent a lot of time on this, and you've spent a lot of time. Stop, you've spent a lot of time, and thank you very much for that brief synopsis.
You're welcome.
Questions, Councilor Anderson?
Shani, this is a really informative presentation, and I was just curious if it will eventually be on our city website. The packet, you know, just has the table that summarizes, it's like a one-page table, but I thought these slides were really very valuable.
Sure, yes, we can add that to the website.
Yeah, whenever it's appropriate, like after we approve this or whatever, but thank you for putting that together.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, so we hold a hearing on this as well, so I will open a hearing on this ordinance. And do we have anyone from the public who's trying to join us from the phone or Zoom?
I see no one requesting permission to speak, Madam Mayor.
Okay, doesn't look like there is anyone, so I'll go ahead and close the hearing.
Madam, I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2514 on first reading as presented. Second?
Great, we have a first and a second, and this is a pretty big one, so I'll just make sure to say any further discussion from council on this. Okay, please go ahead and record your vote. Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is item nine, Resolution 2020-22. This is council consideration of a resolution amending contribution rates to the FPPA Defined Benefit System administered by the Fire and Police Pension Association for reentry police officers for the City of Montrose. I will turn it over again to Finance Director Shani Wittemer.
Thank you. So this resolution you heard two weeks ago, and it basically, basically 30 years ago, the City of Montrose Police Department sworn officers moved from FPPA to ICMA, which is a defined contribution plan, at their request. Now, that was a long time ago, and I wasn't quite here yet, so I don't know what those discussions were. So then, over the years, there've been several discussions about moving back to FPPA. In 2017, that actually was accomplished, and they, at the time, promised us no rate increases. Anyway, House Bill 201044 was passed this year, which actually increases our contribution, the city's contribution to FPPA by a half a percent each year. So rather than wait, I thought it would be prudent to just go ahead and put this resolution to a vote, just because it's necessary for the reentry officers. All the officers will be at the same rate, but we only need this resolution for the reentry officers. And in 2030, the contribution reaches 13%, and that would be the final half a percent increase. So this does replace Resolution 2017-18, and it will be effective 12/28/2020. That's actually the first day of the first payroll in 2021. So with that, I will entertain any questions you all may have, or comments?
Do you have any questions? Seeing none from council, I'll go ahead and accept public comment if you have anyone from the public who is joining us.
I see no one requesting permission to speak, Madam Mayor.
Okay, doesn't look like we have any public comment, so I would entertain a motion.
Madam, I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution 2020-22 as presented. Second?
So we have a first and a second, so please go ahead and record your vote electronically. Great, that motion passes unanimously. And next on our agenda is ordinance 2511. This is a first reading. This is council consideration of an ordinance designating the BPOE Lodge Building at 107 South Cascade Avenue as a City of Montrose historic property pursuant to Chapter 4 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. And I will turn it over to Assistant City Manager Anne Morgan Thiel.
Hello, thank you. This is the first reading of an ordinance to designate this building that we're in right now as a historic building on our local city register. And it's exciting, and to designate this building, the Historic Preservation Commission reviewed this application and recommended approval of the designation. And we were very fortunate to have John Horn, who is the Chair of our Historic Preservation Commission, prepare this application, put together all of the research materials, and present it to the Preservation Commission, and now I'm bringing it forward to you, although I'm not the expert who did all the research. And just a testament to the excellence that we have on our Preservation Commission and their passion for designating these buildings. So as you can see in the memo, this building is more than 50 years old, and it meets the criteria for a designation in our ordinance. It's associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the history of Montrose. There's connection with people who are significant in history. There are a lot of people who came together in order to build this building, to fund this building, and who've used the building over time. And this also has distinctive characteristics of the tight period and method of construction. The architect who designed this building is the same architect who designed City Hall. So that's why they go so well together. So our recommendation is that this building be designated, and if you choose to, you'd approve this ordinance, and then there'd be a second reading of the ordinance, and then it would go on to our local register of historic places. It would be the fifth building.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions? It looks like we're going to hold a hearing, so I'll open the public hearing and see if there's any public comment for this hearing.
See none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, does not appear to be any public comment for the hearing, so I'll focus the hearing for this ordinance and accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, I approve or pass ordinance 2511 on first reading as presented. Second?
We've got a first and a second. Please go ahead and record your votes electronically. And that passed unanimously. So moving on, our next item is item 11, which is Resolution 2020-23. This is a resolution setting December 1st, 2020, as the hearing date for the annexation of the Hilltop Edition 2. I will turn it over to Senior Planner Amy Short.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I must start by sharing my screen. Okay, so the following is the first screen showing the annexation schedule, and we do have a small change for this based on making sure that we hit our notification deadlines, and my previous staff memo had some incorrect dates in order to make sure that we had, like I said, the correct notification procedures and timeline, and some dates were changed based on just the number of council meetings that we have during November and December due to the holidays. So, but that being said, we are updating the city council annexation hearing and the first reading of the annexation ordinance and first reading of the zoning ordinance to December 15th, and instead of December 1st, the reading would be on January 5th. So the Hilltop Edition 2 is a proposed annexation that's located north of Locust Road and consists of the west side of the right-of-way of 6600 Road. So this project site is .45 acres in size. It is within the city's urban growth boundary, the tri-county water service area and the city sewer service area. As you can tell from this map, the gray shaded area is currently city limits, and so the area is urbanizing, and more than one-sixth of the perimeter is contiguous to city limits. This project site is being recommended for zoning as R4. As you can see from this map, the zoning of the surrounding area is R2 to the south and R4 to the east, and then agricultural in the county to the west. The R4 High Density District, as shown here, is intended to provide for high-density multifamily residences, allow for variable densities. The site isn't being proposed for any type of development. We are just bringing in the county road right-of-way and matching the zoning to that on the other side of the road. This map here shows you the official annexation map. According to our comprehensive plan, this area is actually listed as residential mixed density medium. You can kind of read the description of what that is in your packet, as well as the slide here. According to our comprehensive plan, this is also located in Growth Area 1. So Growth Area 1 is designated as the area where infrastructure is already in place, and it's suitable for levels of urban growth, urban levels of development. So in summary, the area is urbanizing, and more than one-sixth is contiguous to city limits. An annexation agreement was not required for this property. The proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare, our annexation policies, and the comprehensive plan, and is recommending approval of the annexation and the R4 High Density District.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? We have talked about this extensively at a work session. So I will hold or accept public comment.
I see none, Madam Mayor.
It doesn't look like there is anyone from the public who wants to comment, so is there most?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-23 as presented. Second?
So we have a first and a second. Please go ahead and vote. And that passed unanimously. So our next agenda item is item 12, which is ordinance 2512, second reading, and this is council consideration of an ordinance on second reading, authorizing the disposal of real property, which is the Anderson Family Trust Number 1 Gap Parcel pursuant to Section 1-9-2 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. Again, Senior Planner Amy Short.
Alright, thank you. Are you able to see my screen again?
Yes.
Alright, the first slide here shows our project schedule. We started with the work session overview on October 5th, had the first reading of the ordinance on October 20th, and as you mentioned, today is the second reading of this ordinance. This general vicinity map shows where this gap parcel is actually located. So it's located east of Chappeta Road, it's south of Baldridge Regional Park, west of Sunset Mesa Road, and northwest of the Grand View Cemetery. So this site location is approximately 2.2 acres, just over .28 acres, sorry, I said that wrong. And it's attractive land that's actually separated from the parent parcel. So the parent parcel is in orange, and it's located to the east, and then there's a little sliver of property up to the northwest of that, and then this gap parcel. And so for this disposal, we are only referring to the yellow piece, not the entire parcel. So the little bit of project background on this one, that for those who may not have been present at the first couple meetings, this was part of an initial land exchange that occurred in 2017 with the Anderson Family Trust to obtain property off of Anderson Road. So the Anderson Road property included about 11.93 acres that was owned by the city near Sunset Mesa, and about 16.2 acres that was owned by the trust off Anderson Road. And then a small 0.28 acre city-owned gap parcel was not transferred to the trust at that time because an additional survey was required. That gap parcel and the parties didn't want to delay the land exchange while waiting for the survey. So the survey has now been prepared, and they're ready to complete the final portion of that land exchange. So this gap parcel is actually a sloping terrain that the city cannot access well, and that's why it was identified to be included in this land exchange. It was intended to be included back in 2017, but was delayed due to the additional survey work that was needed. And now, since that survey work is completed, we are able to convey this gap parcel via a quitclaim deed. No monetary exchange is taking place as it was associated with the primary land exchange that occurred back in 2017. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Again, this is something we had talked about, not only at first reading, but also at a work session. So is there any public comment for this agenda item?
I see none.
There is no public comment, so we could have a motion.
Madam, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 20... 2025, 2012, I think.
Yeah, and it's ordinance, and ordinance, not ordinance.
Okay, consider the ordinance 2512 on second reading as presented.
Thank you.
Second?
Great, we have a first and a second. Please go ahead and vote. And that passed unanimously. So moving on, item 13 is ordinance 2515. This is a first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning district designation of Lot 5 of the Elder Homestead at Montrose Parcel Number 3767-3500. Number 3767-353-04-005 from R3 medium-density district to R4 high-density district. And again, Senior Planner Amy Sharp.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll start my presentation with just sharing with you the zoning schedule that we've had thus far. We had the Planning Commission zoning hearing on October 14th. Then, as you mentioned, today is the first reading of the zoning ordinance in the zoning hearing, and then we'll have the second reading on November 17th. So this map shows you just the general vicinity of where this property is located. It is actually just east of Pavilion Drive, and then between Robbins Way and Stonebridge Drive. So this shows you the project site. So this is actually Lot 5 within the Elder Homestead at Montrose, owned by the Volunteers of America. And I'll show you a map that shows kind of the greater area of the VOA property. This rezone just pertains to Lot 5 within the Elder Homestead at Montrose, and it is 1.99 acres in size. Okay, so this map shows you just kind of the general layout of the entire property here. So as you can see here, we've got a variety of R4, R3A, and R3 within the VOA Volunteers of America site. The applicant is requesting to rezone the project site, which is down here, kind of in the lower-left corner, the 1.99 acres, from R3 medium-density district to R4 high-density district to allow for multifamily housing. So right now, they do have R4 up north in the Cimarron Village, in the vacant land directly to the east of that, where they have 30 senior units, and then they have R3A over here to the east and the south, the Metal Lark Court and the Pavilion Gardens area. Then R3 is right in the middle there, the Homestead at Montrose Assisted Living Center. And at the project site, they're wanting to do more of the multifamily housing similar to what they've done up here at the north end of the property. So according to our rezone criteria, amendments to the official zoning map involving any change in the boundaries in the existing zoning district shall be allowed only under these following conditions that you see here on this slide and also found in your packet. So the proposed rezone, the R4 high-density district, is actually intended to provide for high-density multifamily residences and to also allow for variable densities. The difference is in the dimensional requirements, and the reason why they're seeking the R4 high-density district is to allow for more units. So right now, the R3A zoning allows for multifamily housing at 2,900 square feet per unit, while the R4 zoning is going to allow for multifamily housing at 2,300 square feet per unit. And so that's why they're requesting the rezone, is to have more units. The property adjacent to this one is R3 and R3A, so while there's not R4 directly adjacent to it, it is found within the Montrose VOA campus at the north end of the property. So in our comprehensive plan, this area is listed as residential mixed density low. So this might kind of bring to mind some of the things that we talked about before as far as why it may or may not be applicable and how it fits with our zoning regulations. And so we do believe that the conditions in the area affected have changed since the area was last zoned and since the comprehensive plan done back in 2008. So while this may be listed as residential mixed density low, other properties within the VOA have had increased density over the years and also kind of been developed as a neighborhood center with the different businesses that are located to the north of this property as well. So staff finds that the proposal does meet the rezone criteria stated in Section 4429. We believe that the proposal meets the intent of the R4 high-density district. It is in compliance with the comprehensive plan because we believe that conditions have changed since the area was last zoned. It is compatible with existing uses in the surrounding area. The Planning Commission did recommend rezoning of this property at the last Planning Commission meeting, and therefore, staff recommends approval of the rezone to the R4 high-density district.
Thank you very much. Council, are there any questions?
I have one. Amy, was there any comments from the neighbors to the south?
We did not have any. The VOA did have a neighborhood meeting virtually, so they reached out to neighbors, not just within 100 feet as we do, but within 150 feet, to reach out to all those who were south of them, as well as the businesses that are located up north, and invited them to a virtual meeting, as well as our public noticing requirements for the Planning Commission to see if there were any concerns, and we did not receive any.
Thank you.
Any additional questions from council?
Yes, Ms. Sharp, for the clarification, the four lots directly to the south of this proposed rezoning are currently vacant. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I will go ahead and open a hearing. Do we have members from the public who wish to make public comment for this hearing?
I see none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, seeing that there are no comments, I will close the hearing.
I'll make a motion, Madam Mayor, to pass Ordinance 2515 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Please go ahead and vote. And that passed unanimously. Next on our agenda is item 14, Woodgate Edition Number 4 Annexation. Council will hold a hearing on the annexation of the Woodgate Edition Number 4. I will turn it over to Senior Planner Amy Sharp.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll start with our annexation schedule as usual. On September 14th, we had the City Council Work Session Overview. October 6th was the resolution to set a hearing date. On October 14th was the Planning Commission Zoning Hearing. And then today, we will be doing the annexation hearing, as well as the first reading of the annexation ordinance and first reading of the zoning ordinance, followed by the second reading on November 17th. So this property, I think many of you are familiar with, but it is located between South Townsend Avenue and along Woodgate Road, just to the west there, where it connects over to South Townsend currently. The site location is 0.49 acres in size. It is within the city's urban growth boundary, the city water and city sewer service area. As you can tell from this map, it is actually completely surrounded by city limits. And the purpose of this annexation is to actually clean up an orphaned parcel of land, as you can see here, that's surrounded by city limits. We are applying for this annexation on behalf of the landowner in support of the upcoming Woodgate Road realignment project. The proposed zoning on this property is B3. As you can see here, the B3 general commercial district is intended for a large variety of uses that require large storage areas to conveniently serve customers. And that will match up with the current zoning that is directly to the south and the west. And then, as you can see here, there's also B3 to the north, which is general commercial, and R1B small estate district to the east. According to our comprehensive plan, this is located in the area that's shaded red, which is listed as general commercial. And this is intended for auto-oriented uses, such as the South Townsend Commercial area, and provides a wide range of general retail goods and services for the entire community. Also, according to our comprehensive plan, this property is located within Growth Area 1, the area where infrastructure is already in place or nearby, and is suitable for urban levels of development. Staff analysis on this project is that this area is urbanizing, where the one-sixth is contiguous to city limits. An annexation agreement was not required. The proposal is consistent with public health, safety, and welfare, city annexation policies, and the comprehensive plan. And therefore, staff recommends approval of the annexation and the B3 general commercial district.
Thank you very much. This is multiple parts, but does council have questions on any of those parts? Yes.
Amy, may I assume that since the city is doing this on behalf of the landowner, that the landowner is not opposed to this?
Correct. They did apply as well. They've been a part of it as well all along the way.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about the annexations or the zoning from council? Okay, then we'll move through the correct procedures, and that would be on the Resolution 2020-24, which is the consideration of a resolution finding a plot for the annexation. I will accept any public comment.
I see none, Madam Mayor.
There is no public comment, so I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, move to adopt Resolution 2020-24 as presented. I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Please go ahead and vote on this resolution. Okay, that passed unanimously. The next step is Ordinance 2516, which is the first reading of the ordinance that is the annexation of the Woodgate Edition Number 4. And I will hold a hearing, so I'll open the hearing and accept any public comment.
There is none, Madam Mayor.
No public comment, so I will close the hearing on the Ordinance 2516.
Madam, I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2516 on the first reading as presented. Second.
We have a first and a second. Please record your vote. And that passes unanimously, which brings us to our next agenda item, which is item 15, Ordinance 2517 on first reading. This is the ordinance of the City of Montrose providing for the zoning of the Woodgate Edition Number 4 as B3 general commercial district. I will go ahead and hold a hearing for this. Are there any public wishing to make a comment?
There are none.
Seeing none, I will close the hearing, and then have a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to pass Ordinance 2517 on first reading as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Please vote. And that ordinance passed unanimously. That brings us to our next agenda item, Agenda Item 16, Waterfall Canyon Subdivision Filing Number 4 Final Plot. This is council consideration of the Waterfall Canyon Subdivision Filing Number 4 Final Plot to create 24 new residential lots and dedicate rights of way and or easements. Again, Senior Planner Amy Sharp.
All right, thank you very much. The following is a schedule. I should have updated this. We did not do county work session overview for this one. We determined that final plots did not need to go to council work session for an overview, but just to council hearing. That's why you didn't see that come through for the work session. The general vicinity map. So this property is located over on West Spring Creek Road and south of Spring Creek Road. Then it's also north of West Oak Grove Road, east of Highway 90, and west of 6375 Road. This project site is outlined in blue. It's usually in yellow, but I was showing the zoning on this as well, so it's just this kind of odd-shaped L property in blue. It's 54.95 acres in size. It'll create 24 new residential lots on Howard Fork Avenue, as well as Pilot Knob Avenue, which will be a new street. This consists of R3 medium-density and R3A medium-high-density within this property. And just for reference, the Waterfall Canyon subdivision amended preliminary plot was approved back in November of 2017, and the final plots have to come within five years of that. So the final plot requirements, in order for this to be approved, all lots must meet the minimum lot size, which are required in the R3 and R3A zoning, that's 6250 square feet in this case, and they do meet that minimum lot size requirement. All the surrounding streets must be in place and approved by the city engineer, and a preliminary letter of infrastructure completion must be received. The items have also been completed prior to today. And utilities, the easements, city water mains, sewer and utilities must also be installed, and those are complete. And I'll let Scott Murphy speak to any of those, if you have any questions on that as well. This map shows the final plot and all the lots that will be developed as part of this final plot. So it's pointing right here to the location. This is the area where those lots will be. And then this is kind of a blown-up version, a detail of which lots will be installed as part of this final plot. This is Howard Fork Avenue, which is just an extension of what already exists. The mailboxes that currently exist are right here. This corner is the entrance sign to Waterfall Canyon and the flagpole. And this Pilot Knob Avenue will be a new street. That's all I have for my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council, does anyone have any questions about this final plot? I don't see any questions, so we'll accept any public comment that may be.
I see none, Madam Mayor.
There seems to be no public comment, and so we could have a motion.
Madam, I'll make a motion, consider making a motion to approve the Waterfall Canyon Subdivision filing Number 4 Final Plot expressly conditioned upon city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met and that the applicant adequately address all of the staff concerns prior to execution of the final plot. City staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plot prior to all conditions being satisfied.
Second. So we have a first and a second on that. Please go ahead and vote. And that passes unanimously, taking us to item number 17, Ordinance 2513, which is the second reading. Council, for Ordinance 2513, it's an ordinance of the city authorizing the sale of real property pursuant to the 1972 Russell Stover lease and Section 1-9-2 of the Official Code of the City of Montrose. And I will ask City Attorney Stephen Alborn to present.
I think my main purpose today is to give Amy a break after the Amy Sharp Show. As you know, we entered into a 1972 agreement with Russell Stovers, which provided them a option to purchase. They've executed the option, and this disposal ordinance would allow us to fulfill our contractual obligations that they initiated when they asked to exercise their right and option to purchase.
Thank you. Does council have any questions?
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please.
I think it's interesting that nearly 50 years ago, our predecessors found it important to have business incentives, and so these have a long precedence in our community. And this is just an example of something that our, I don't want to say foreflatters, wasn't that long ago, but that these people felt was really important for our economic benefit in the community. So we're just following through with decisions made many years ago, and I think it's worth noting.
Yep, 47 strong years of an employer in our community that multiple generations have worked there. Sad to see it come to an end, but it has been a good 47 years.
Yeah, for sure.
Any other council comments or questions? Then I will accept any public comment on the second reading.
And I see none, Madam Mayor.
There are no public comments, so we could have a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt Ordinance 2513 on second reading as presented. Second.
We've got a first and a second. Please go ahead and vote. And that passes unanimously. Next, item 18, Contract Amendment Approval. This is council consideration of an agreement with Corolo Engineers This is council consideration of an agreement with Corallo Engineers, Inc. to perform nutrient removal optimization pilot testing at the City of Montrose wastewater treatment plant for an amount not to exceed $100,000. And I will turn it over to Utilities Manager David Grease for an overview.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, before you this morning is the approval of the agreement with Corallo. This all started in the 2019 renewal of our National Pollution Elimination Discharge Permit that's issued by the state of Colorado that required us to take some steps in improving the nutrient removal optimization of the treatment plant and meet more stringent limits on our discharge into the Uncompadre River. So as part of that process, we contracted with Corallo in March to start looking at our treatment plant process and come up with some ideas and some ways to optimize the existing facilities in order to meet these more stringent regulations. They performed some computer modeling and sampling of the existing plant, the plant discharge, and came up with a couple of options that the modeling shows some very promising results in meeting some of the nutrient removals, specifically the nitrogen removal for the treatment plant. And again, with biological processes like this, prior to investing a lot of dollars in infrastructure changes, we want to pilot test some of these processes and just to make sure that they're effective, given the weather situation and stuff that we have. And so right now is an ideal time of the year to be pilot tested because we're kind of the worst-case scenario for biological activity. And that it's cold out, the bugs don't reproduce and act quite as efficiently during the winter months. So this part of the process will be actually changing some of the treatment process, changing the speed of some of the aerators that we've got there at the treatment plant, possibly changing the depths of some of the aerators to where they have less oxygen coming into the water, to where it reduces that oxygen level and encourages the growth of nitrogen-removing bacteria. So there's a real biology behind this process in doing that. So that will be completed, according to Corallo's schedule, by about mid-year of next year. And the funding for this, part of it is included in the 2020 budget. And then the remaining part of this project would be funded in the 2021 budget. With that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Are there any members from the public wishing to comment about nutrient removal optimization pilot testing at the wastewater treatment plant?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
There are none. Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion, consider approval agreement with Corallo Engineers Incorporated for nutrient removal optimization pilot testing at the City of Montrose wastewater treatment plant for an amount not to exceed $100,000.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Please go ahead and vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. So next is item 19, which is our staff reports. We have one on our agenda, which is the Help for Hope update from Assistant City Manager Anne Morton-Baylor.
Thank you. Assistant Frank gave you an overview. I think that was at our last council meeting about the success of this program, and more details are included in the packet for your review. In June, you approved for $25,000 to go towards the Help for Hope Montrose Restaurant voucher program, which essentially gave restaurant vouchers to community members. The Help for Hope program on its own was giving vouchers to all kinds of community members, people who were on the front lines of this COVID response. And with city council's money, you directed us to give those vouchers to the neediest in our community and to try and direct the vouchers to people who were in need of some additional meals in order to help restaurants, but also help people maybe have a bright spot in their day, be able to eat out, and also have a free meal. And that's what the Help for Hope program did. There's information here about the partners that distributed this money. And, excuse me, let me back up then. In August, you dedicated another $10,000 to this program. So a total of $35,000 dedicated. So you can see on the table, 691 of your city cards were redeemed. That's just over the amount funded by the money that you gave to the program. And in order to get all of the money used, Help for Hope program actually issued more cards than that $35,000. And so really happy to report that the Help for Hope committee, through a lot of work, was able to allocate a straight amount of cards. So they issued 1,000. They got just about 691 redeemed of our city cards, and they covered, I think those, you know, two extra, one or two extra that were retained. So this equals 2,756 total meals that the money paid for for our community members. And also then that's, you know, 691 $50 vouchers that were distributed to restaurants. And page two shows the restaurants that participated and the number of cards that were redeemed at each of those restaurants. And that's including the City of Montrose funding, but it's not only the City of Montrose funding. So you'll see there's $53,000 that was contributed to the restaurants through this program. That includes the other Help for Hope cards as well. So a total of $53,000 going into the restaurants in Montrose. And through your contribution, a total of 2,756 total meals distributed to the partners on page one, including Page 10, Montrose Wink, School District, Hilltop, Housing Resources, Kitty Campus Daycare, Pick Place, the Hispanic Affairs Project, and then a few that third organization wasn't owed it on the card.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
And just lots of thanks to the Montrose Community Foundation for overseeing this and the Help for Hope Committee, because they did all of the legwork and following up with the partners to make sure that those cards were ready.
That's great. What a great partnership between the city and the Montrose Community Foundation. And I'm glad we were able to help with this program. Does council have any questions or comments?
No, just to thank you. I think it's a great report. It shows what we've done. And as you said, thanks to the community foundation for their help.
Are there additional staff reports for today's meeting?
I just wanted to give a quick update on CARES Act funding. So I just received an email from the finance department. We did receive our first reimbursement from DOLA. And so the city received $148,182 from our first request to go back and recoup some of our costs related to COVID and COVID response and business assistance and those types of things. So really excited about that. We had asked for more, but in our first application, we included a lot of salaries and time where people had been redirected to other duties related to COVID. And DOLA and the state really looked at that. And in order to qualify for federal, to make sure that there's no audit issues later on and make sure everything's on the up and up, we decided to withdraw the request for most of the staffing because we didn't account for it really on an hourly basis. And in good faith, say that 100% of our job was related to COVID. So we did reduce our original scope, and so everything other than that was approved. So that in our ongoing requests, it's less about staffing and more about direct assistance that's being provided to the community and things that we're investing in, supplies and tables and chairs and all those types of things rather than people. Kendall did a great job, and really the whole team of department heads and a lot of other staff members put a lot of time and effort into putting the numbers together to make that a successful application.
Great, thank you for that work. Is Jim Shine available to tell us a little bit about snow plowing, snow removal during the winter? If he is available, we discussed sharing that information at the city council meeting.
Oh, I am here.
Great, thank you. You gave us a great overview yesterday at the work session, but we talked about how some people watched the council meeting but not the work session. And I think that was important information to share with our community. So can you tell us a little bit about how the snow removal works in the city?
Yeah, definitely. I think this recent storm kind of kickstarted our snow season and got us rolling. So I can kind of put a reminder out there on how our tier system works. But also, I would refer people to our website. There's a really good explanation and breakdown on our website that shows the tier systems with explanation and a map, so it's really easy to follow. You can just search the website for snow removal or look through the Public Works tab. It's in there. But a brief explanation is how it works. We have four tiers, tier one being the highest priority, of course, and that's major arterials, routes to the hospital, things like that. Tier twos get to some of our minor arterials, but also routes to school. Oh, yeah, Greg has shown the map there, so in this case, blue is our tier twos. That's where we're gonna... So we focus mainly primarily on ones and twos to start off when we first get an initial storm. And then as those are cleared, we move into threes. We usually then make sure we've got all turn lanes cleared and things like that before we move into tier four, which is mostly residential streets. Depending on the storm, you know, every storm is different, so our strategy changes every time, depending on temperature, depending on the amount of snow. All those variables change our approach. But basically, we would work down from tier one down to tier four in every case, and definitely the highest priority being those ones and twos. So again, this map is on our website, and it may show if anybody's interested in their route to work or school, which of the roads would be on our highest priority.
Thank you.
Tell me, how do I find that map on the website? What would I search for?
Snow removal is one way, or if you go to the Public Works tab and then Streets, and then there's a button for snow removal there. But if you type in "snow removal" in the search button, that'll get you there.
That's easy. Thank you.
Yesterday, I Google searched "City of Montrose snow removal map," and it pops right up.
Nice. Okay, that's great. Thanks.
I think that's helpful and good information to have as we head into the winter and hopefully see a lot more snow and moisture in our area. Thank you.
I have one question. Jim, can you tell us who does clean the Highway 550 and 50 and 90?
Yeah, so those are CDOT routes. We do have an agreement with CDOT to clean or to remove snow basically in the core of the city. So Townsend from San Juan to Oak Grove is a city we'd be clearing that area, although it is a CDOT right-of-way. So south of town from Oak Grove, all the way out south of town and through the county, that's CDOT. So we have agreements with them for basically what's inside the city is their responsibility. Is that answered the question?
Okay, is there anything additional that any staff wished to bring up at today's meeting? I don't think there is. Okay. Any additional comments from the city council today? I don't think there are.
I'll make one. I'd just like to thank the staff and the police department for the meeting last night on the police building. That was extremely well done. A little disappointing we didn't have more people there, but I think it was a good program.
And thank you to Amy Sharp, who did a lot of the heavy lifting on today's meeting. There's a lot of work, and we go through them pretty quickly here as we've discussed them prior. And it's in part to the good work that she's done putting together the information for us. So she had a lot of items on today's agenda. So thank you to our planning staff. Appreciate that work. And to all city staff, have a great day. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn. Second.
By acclamation, adjourn.